Education in order, except for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. We'll go ahead and get started with the approval of the agenda.
Captain Anderson, we approve the agenda with the following amendments. Additional certified and classified personnel actions for consideration, item number E3.
Motion by Laura, second by Alex. Any discussion? All those in favor who say they're ready to move now? Motion carries. Okay. Do you have any public comments? Moving on to recognitions, a building presentation. Horace Good Middle School, Brad Springsteen. Is Jerry gonna help with your presentation?
He's gonna be handy, thanks.
Awesome.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you about Horace Good. Tonight's focus for us is gonna be on just a couple of different things. One is what we do, what we work really hard at at Horace Good in trying to get kids involved and be a part of our school and to create an identity for themselves with being only in middle school for two years. We're doing what we can to try to get them prepared as they make that next step towards high school, which we know middle school years are some of the toughest years for kids for a lot of different reasons. And there's so many news for kids and their moms and dads and all that. But I think we've done a great job at our school with trying to get our kids involved in things and prepare them for that next step. And we know we don't get to offer as many things that they get at the high school, but we try to go and try to find those things that aren't always necessarily supportive or a cost that is to the district and try to find those partnerships and do those things. To give you an example, last year we had an enrollment that ranged anywhere from around 750 to 770 kids throughout the year, and we had over 625 kids that participated in extracurricular activities, which is a great thing for a lot of reasons in our eyes is because it ties in academics, responsibility, and gives them a lot of friendships and things and gives them a sense of belonging to the school. But it also creates a lot of other issues for us as a building, too. We gotta try to provide meaningful opportunities for our kids. And so our staff does a great job with that and we work really hard at that, and I think we do that. And we're always trying to find ways to make that better. To date this year, we're on pace to be very similar to the same numbers as last year. Already 377 kids have participated in things that have been offered from the school so far. We've also created a lot of clubs that are not part of any school extracurricular activities and it's not tied into academics and eligibility and all that. But we have a science olympiad that was started last year, and this is volunteered by teachers that do this. And we currently have around 25 kids participating in that and doing stuff every day after school. And we use donated money that is supporting our kids to do that science olympiad, and they'll get to go off and do a competition. Last year they went to Hays, and we're trying to find those opportunities for kids because that's not, not every kid that's doing science olympiad wants to participate in the other extracurricular opportunities that are there. Other partnerships that we've, that we've built at Horace Good is through Big Brothers and Big Sisters, and we have around 75 kids that participate in that throughout the school year. And they do after-school activities that isn't just academic support, but it's also enrichment opportunities, which partners up with the Rec, Garden City Rec Commission, where we have kids that do drama and theater and they get other opportunities. We have a cheerleading program that was began at the middle school that was partnered up with the Rec Commission this year. And we saw roughly 25 girls that participated in that in the fall. And we have around 40 that want to do it here once the January boys' basketball season rolls around. So, an opportunity that's, that is not costing the district any, any money, but is providing a lot of kids opportunities that don't necessarily want to do some of the other opportunities offered at the school. Yearbook is something that we have kids doing. Intermurals is something else that we started to try to get kids involved in more things. We actually host intermurals tonight, and we have Kenneth Henderson participating in that with us also. So, with what's going on right now, we've, we've got about 400 kids doing things outside of what is offered within the school programs that are such as basketball, volleyball, football, and those kind of things. So, ways that we try to get kids involved, which we just believe has so many other dividends that are paid throughout the year with kids, is something that is very, very big to us. Our aim tonight is kind of what is a board focus that you have, and that's we have some of our teachers and mostly our English Language Arts teachers. And with PLCs being a focus by the Board of Education this year, what we want to focus on with you is something that I think has been key to our success at Horace Good. And I think it goes back to our days when we were APHUBER. This schedule that you have in front of you is something that has been in place as a foundation for us for six years. And we know every building has something a little different to what they do, but for us, this has been pretty much concrete with, with days of the week a little different for the last six years. For us, it means a lot on why we have this, and we see the growth. We had a 17% growth out of our students last year in Ames Webb building-wide, and we anticipate to see something similar to that again this year. And we know it's a work in progress, and we think we're, we're gonna work hard and try to do things what's best for our kids and provide them opportunities, but make the goal that we want them to be prepared when they go to high school. And the PLC is really the foundation for what we think makes things work for us. It helps our new teachers, it helps, helps teachers that are on a, we had a teacher that, actually we had a teacher that had a baby, and so we've got long-term sub in there. And because of our PLC foundation and schedules and the collaboration that takes place, those things go seamless. And we get new teachers that don't feel overwhelmed and actually have a life, which is what we want, because we want them to stay. And our turnover shows that. We're the second-largest building in the district, and I believe the foundation and the culture that goes is what's gonna help us keep the progress that we see that goes on. We brought teachers here tonight that are out of our 8th grade PLC, our English Language Arts PLC, and they can talk to you a little bit about and answer any questions that you might have as to what you see with that. But I know, talking to some of them, we have one that's came from the elementary that is here. So, her move from the elementary to the middle school, it's been beneficial for her to have that time. One that's a second-year teacher, he moved from 7th grade last year to 8th grade this year. And having that content collaboration has been very key to making it seamless with them. And then we have one that, this is her sixth year here, so she was from the beginning of this. So, the three of them are here to kind of answer any questions that you might have, being a focus by the Board of Education this year. But we thought this would be beneficial for you to help answer any questions that you might have with how it works in our building.
Thank you, Brad. Any questions to ask for that? Go ahead, Mark.
You know, it's such a unique building and setting you have. It's sort of the, the old high school, it's now Horace Good. The cultural challenges you have of having a lot of space, and so we tend to want to put students over there. And, and yet, teachers need to not feel overwhelmed with class size, or the facility has to work. You know, I think I attended the last staff meeting over there, and it seemed like maybe we had some leaky roofs to fix, you know, some of those things with the, maybe older parts of the building. Hopefully, your facilities got that message, which I'm sure they did and through the notes. But you also have space, and that's a good thing. But then you have the challenge of, at least I heard in that staff meeting, larger class sizes.
We, we do have larger class sizes, but I think in the three years from the move from APHUBER to Horace Good, I think the number-one question I probably get in the public is, what do you do with all that space? What do you have all, what do you have, how many empty rooms do you have? And we utilize every classroom that we have, and there's total of three classrooms that we do not utilize every hour of the day, but they're used a portion of the day. Once you took the modulators away from what was Garden City High School, that took a lot of space. JDA accounted for a lot of classroom space. We have a lot of big open space areas that aren't necessarily used all the time, such as a courtyard and a cafeteria, and the cafeteria make a lot of space. An auditorium, two gymnasiums. Those are things that take up a lot of open space, but as far as classroom space, we utilize it very well. We also get into, you know, having a lot of kids, and our elective teachers probably are the ones that see the most kids in the classes. And I think they do a great job with that, but it does present challenges at times. And, you know, I appreciate the effort and the, the aim that they take every time is that they're gonna give whatever kid walks through the door their best effort. And, and I do see that happening, but I also do see it sometimes, a lot of the effort is more management than it is probably enrichment that they could give. Thanks.
I really appreciate the extracurricular activities that you offer the children. I, I look at it as ultimately decreasing dropout rate. I want these kids to feel like they belong and they're a part and that they're vested in their own happiness and their academic career. So, I think that's a very important step, and the socialization is valuable as well. Moving on to PLCs, which is a big issue of mine. I, I think it's great that you've found creative time in your already busy day. When you're counting minutes in a day, that you've, you've found time to meet this many times. Do you ever meet with APHUBER staff and, or Kenneth Henderson, excuse me, Kenneth Henderson?
We do in certain, well, for example, we have a group right now that's meeting on grading, and they're spending some time after school. There's been times where, where we're doing an iPad discussion or looking at technology use. So, there are some things that take place after school hours right now, this school year. In the past, we've done some times where we've combined, we combined at the beginning of the year some in-service time. Our bell schedules are pretty close, and we do share a few teachers between the two buildings. But just the way some things work sometimes with how, how you have to work in schedules, it makes it very difficult. The, the toughest part for us is we made the focus to make our common planned time for teachers in content areas. And so there's the, that's where the focus has to be, because that's where the instruction, and so we're, we're following the same roadmap together. But we can't get that to where it's the same between both buildings, just because of the makeup and the staffing. And when you can offer certain things, like when, when our band and our choir and orchestra and those types of things are offered, creates challenges on how you can get alignment between two schools to do that.
Yeah, well, justice is tough when we're to that level. That's why we've, we've given the calendar committee a huge task of trying to figure out, is there time in the day where we can allow for collaboration time, you know, across the district? So, it's not your, your, just your building type of collaboration. Because I don't want you to miss out on things that, you know, you could learn from your peers across town.
Right.
And vice versa.
There's, started the school year, obviously with the math change that went on, the math, the middle school math teachers got together and as they, and what they've done is, they're being creative. They've created a blog that they talk back and forth, and they express things that have come up with maybe what lesson they were just teaching or what's coming up next down on the next unit. So, there is communication that takes place in, in those ways, but physically getting them together all the time doesn't always work.
Right. And, and virtually, we could Skype and do conferences and things like that. So, but ultimately, this was our goal, to make sure that collaboration time was permitted and encouraged and supported by you, the building leader. So, I'm, I'm really happy to see that. Any other comments?
Question, question on the calendar, just so I can understand it a little bit better, because as a board, we continue to talk about PLCs and how we can make schools, how that process works better than schools. And one school's doing real well, and then the next school's saying, you know, two thumbs down. And if you can just explain your process here, on Monday, so group one, how long do they meet and lose all in group one? Is it a group of teachers, I'm assuming?
Yes, it is. For us, it's content-focused. So, for example, group one, which falls under a period, and our class periods are 43 minutes long. And each group sets norms for what their, what their PLC group is going to be, and part of their norms is when they start, when they end. And they're gonna follow those things so they can respect everybody's time and get there and stay to an agenda so nobody's off-topic as what we're doing. And we're covering things that are specific for that meeting and that, that agenda for that day. But group one, for example, is our 8th grade ELA teachers, and that's when they're all off on plan. And so, on that day, we have 8th grade ELA, we have our ESL teachers that are all part of that same group, and then we'll have some elective teachers. So, elective teachers are the, are the people that don't, they kind of get the short end because we only have one computer teacher, we only have one choir teacher, one band teacher. So, they don't get to collaborate with somebody else because they're, they're the entire program within the school.
So then when you go to Tuesday?
When they go to Tuesday, it's content. So, this is when all the 8th grade ELA teachers are gonna meet, all the 7th grade science teachers, they're gonna meet during their common planned time that they have. And they might do a lot of different things in there, such as talk about lesson planning for the, for the week, for the next week, the unit, maybe they're gonna do a common assessment with one another. Maybe they're gonna combine classes. You know, for example, right before break, we had all of our social studies classes that, that combined together for a unit for one day. So, this is where they can collaborate with one another. And this is where I think it's been the best help to our new teachers, more than anybody, because they now can get in there and don't feel like they have to be a day ahead of their kids and going home, grading, planning, preparing, getting a little bit of sleep, getting up early and doing all that. They get to now bounce off ideas, listen from veterans, listen from other new teachers, and, but still go back and have some of their freedom to do their things their way.
And period seven and eight, is that after-school then, or is that?
No, we have, we're nine-period day.
Okay. Okay, then on Wednesday, everyone meets for 20 minutes?
When they meet in the mornings, and they might meet with their SAT leaders, so student-assisted teams, so kids that have ILPs, kids that might be struggling on their team, because in a team, you have kids that have some common teachers, and they might have kids that are struggling in two or three classes. And this might be an opportunity that they try to organize a meeting with a parent or pull the kid in and have a meeting with the kid to discuss a plan on what we need to do to improve your grades or, or to help them out with whatever struggles they'll have.
And this is before school, correct?
And they do that before school. The reason that happens is because we don't, we can't make, we can't configure it to have a common planned time for a team and a content because of having a five-member team.
And is 20 minutes enough to get anything done?
Yes.
It is. Okay, and then Thursday, you just repeat, Tuesday it looks like, is that right?
Thursday goes back to content.
43 minutes again for each period? And like, when you guys have a staff meeting, is that, is that added time to this, or do you take something away from here?
What I have found is, in six years of doing this, we can eliminate the second staff meeting for each month. We'll have them if it's needed, but we can eliminate it because we can relay information out to staff consistently in the same way, and everybody gets a message in a manner that you're not taking away, you're not taking that time after-school hours.
And then my last question, do you feel that you need more time for your PLC plan? I mean, would that, I'm sure that would help, but if we said, yeah, you need more time, where would you find that?
I think if we asked our teachers what they, where they wanted more time, they would want more time in the classroom with their kid, and if they'd want anything else.
Well, let's ask them. You've got three here, right?
Yep.
You want us to know?
Please.
Well, like your calendar, I think this is the first one I've seen. And I think it's a good process, or maybe other schools can copy or learn from you a lot.
Well, I, what I have appreciated is that I have had the opportunity to develop what I think is best for our school and to build our culture. And I think the way we have control of the way we organize our PLC calendar works best for us. And I don't know if it's gonna work best in somebody else's building, but I, I trust that they, they know what's best for their building. But I think for us, this foundation that's been in place for six years helps us with having a lot of kids and a lot, and a lot of staff.
Brad, does your band teacher share between?
She spends half the day at the high school, and then she comes and does the afternoon with us.
While you guys discuss or share with us your opinions, I just want to make sure that some, somewhere we address, I want to make sure we're not just meeting to meet. And so if you feel like the time is well-spaced and it's, it's good time, that's great. If not, I want to talk a little bit about how we can make that better.
I've been with Mr. Springsteen since he was the new principal at APHUBER. I was a Brady teacher, and I think it's a wonderful schedule because we don't meet needlessly. Especially in our content team, we're very good about, this is what we need to talk about, okay, we've got it. Let's go back to our rooms and grade. Or sometimes it turns into, hey, this is a problem I'm having across the board. Is anyone else having this issue? With apostrophes, 8th graders are terrible with apostrophes, for example. And it's something that all five of us were able to sit down and say, what are we gonna do? Because they cannot continue to write like this. So, it's.
Thank you.
Yeah. I had both your sentences, but I think it's been fantastic because Mr. Springsteen does not want us meeting needlessly. He wants us in the classroom, preparing lessons, getting up into Quad D lessons, getting to work together and say, hey, I've got this great idea, what do you think?
Great. And we found that if, I mean, one day is generally enough for us, but if there's a week or two that we don't have enough time, then we either send many, many, many emails between us through the week, or we just meet again. Hey, can we quick-meet for 15 minutes on this day? And that's never been a problem for us. So, if we need more time, we figure, we find that between us on our common planned time. But that's why it's nice to have common planned time.
I brought with us our notebooks, we're very organized PLC. The blue one is kind of PLCs, Scott DeFord's papers, our meeting minutes, Quadrant D lesson planning, all the paperwork that's been given to us and a calendar as well, the vision statement. This one is my collection of the content and curriculum and the calendar and the shared lesson plans we do and notes and how do we want to modify this. So, let you guys have a look.
Do the three of you feel that you have enough opportunities through blogs, et cetera, to meet with your colleagues at Kenneth Henderson?
Yeah.
You feel like that's, you're good? Okay. Because I think it would take going into the calendar to really allow that to change. You've done everything you can in house, it looks like.
I was part of the group that was still doing morning PLCs once a month, too, at 7:00. Across the, one of us, we'd either go there one month or they'd come to us. So, we've transitioned since then, but I was part of that group that we did. We were still APHUBER when we were in that, but.
Okay. So, it's good right now the way?
And we have good relationships with our peers at Kenneth Henderson, and we're able to email back and forth when necessary.
That's when electronics in the district really does help. I didn't even think about blogs, but that's perfect, too.
One thing that PLCs has allowed 8th grade ELA to do, we do, are called Word Wednesdays. And every other Wednesday, we share our kids between the six of us. It's the five teachers and Mrs. Jameson, our librarian. And it's an enrichment opportunity. I teach creative writing, so the kids who are interested in a nine-week creative writing course come to me. Mr. Ball does how music and language work together with what they're learning. Mrs. Colton's been doing journalism. Mrs. Jameson works with technology and how that can help create, you just did QR codes, correct? They can scan the QR code of a book and get a peer-written review. So, those have been really good, that was a lot of planning upfront, and PLCs allowed us to do that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
First of all, I echo what Tim said here on the schedule, it's very interesting. Did I hear you say that this has been going on for six years or so?
Yes, with, this was probably the first thing we put in place at APHUBER.
Very impressive. I know it's just challenging to find time to fit everything in, and have this well-organized probably allows teachers to just have that confidence when things are happening. You know, I think we're gonna be faced as a district with that ongoing challenge of budget, and we could do so much more with a little bit more resource. And I think we're probably gonna be faced, as I understand, the conversations we've had briefly at the board level of taking a different approach. Maybe we'll talk about that some more when we look at the audit here later on at the meeting. Different approach to program budgeting. And of course, it's just critical then that the, that the needs get conveyed and the strategies up the line so that we, we don't, as a district, cut something we shouldn't be cutting that's working well. One of the concerns that I've, I've always had is when at Horace Good, you spend so much time on PLCs and on individual learning plans and helping those individual students get prepared for high school, how well we're transitioning some of those strategies for those individual students into the high school. And I know that translates to staff and resources and that kind of thing. So, do any sense of, in this organizational work, how well that's dovetailing in with transitioning students into high school? That's a big question.
Well, we have taken some opportu, in, in the past, we've taken some opportunities during district insert mistakes. And we've combined staff from the high school to work with middle school staff, and we did it by content area. And that was beneficial, but it's, it's difficult because of the fact of the timepiece you've gotta be able to have. Just like we see our teachers that communicate with, with their peers at Kenneth Henderson, we have teachers that communicate with the same at, at Garden City High School. And a lot of that's formed during the new teacher time that they spend together, because they build those relationships, get that opportunity to be together. But then, once school year starts, everybody's doing their own thing and busy, that it doesn't necessarily always happen for them. So, there are some things that, that maybe could be a little more beneficial. And for us, you know, we're, we have six feeders. And we're the largest feeder for both intermediates. And we do see this a lot, that everybody does some things a little bit different. And that does present some challenges for us. But that's why, to us, it's most important that we have a foundation in place that doesn't change and it makes sense as they, as they go through. Because two years goes pretty quick, and it makes the, makes the most sense to us that we're preparing them when they hit the high school. And I think our teachers really do appreciate when they hear those high school teachers saying, I know where that kid came from last year, you did a great job. And we do hear that a lot, so we appreciate that. But we know it could be better, just like what we do.
Brad, hi, it's Cynthia. Since I work out of the counseling office, I see our counselors working with the high school counselors as we get ready for enrollment with our 8th graders. We worked with the ESL department over at the high school. We work with the special education department over at the high school so that transition is a little bit more smooth. We send our Ames Webb scores out so they know what school, what students to target when it comes to interventions for them that first semester of their freshman year. So, we keep in close contact. I keep in close contact with the coaches up at the, up at the high school. We have a very good working relationship with the high school.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, thanks, Brad.
Thank you very much. Were you coming here, making over at Garden City, or what? Apparently we weren't red.
Oh, yeah. This is in honor of KJ.
It's one night, Brad, I'm trying to.
We don't, we don't allow red in.
I like Miss Bates yelling with blue. Our next order of business is to review our district audit with KJ and Gary Schlackey from Lindsay Verstet.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
We appreciate the opportunity today. And being mindful of your time, we'll try to present this in a fashion that we communicate with green presence to you. And if you have questions, feel free to, to ask them. If I, if you can't hear me very well, please just let me know. I had a speech teacher once telling me I was standing in the back of the line when the speaking voices were handed out, and that's probably true. I will, I'll try and get that across. So, tonight, we'll, we'll start this in a little different fashion than we have the past couple years. couple of years. And we'll begin by discussing some of the financial challenges that each district is facing now, but also some of the trends that go along with that. I think then that will set the stage where we can take a look at how the district compares with some other districts, its peers, in so much as that we can locate districts that are close to Garden City's situation. Talk a little bit about the audit report briefly and a very brief presentation on the management letter, which Teresa will present. And then finally, Lisa will discuss the letter to the governing body. So with that, I think we're ready. I'll try to stay out of the way, but I'm not sure exactly where to stand to do that.
Well, we've got two slides that we've put it on our iPad, so feel free to roll. Or two screens.
Back of the line, yeah.
Tim's, Tim's heard this already, he's served on the audit committee. Thank you, Tim, for your service there. Okay, the first graph is a comparison of the budget per pupil, the mill levy and the general fund. Now, this shows us, this is going to show us something we talked about over the years, that is the challenges that the district is facing with inflation. Inflation being the blue triangle is representing consumer price index increases beginning when we started this in 1995. And you can see the increases in the budget per pupil had we kept pace with inflation. Now, the general fund has a mandated budget per pupil. This is what the state says that the general fund can spend on budget per pupil. And then the state also mandates the mill levy and the general fund. And you see it's been at the 20 mill levy and this is statewide, all districts faces for, since 1999. Okay, thank you. Is that Darren, did you have? Thank you. Okay, so keep this in mind, this, in particular, this increase in inflation budget per pupil compared with what's been mandated. Now, the difference you'll realize is made up by the state in state aid. So if our budget per pupil that we're spending here that the state tells us we can spend in the general fund is not sufficiently funded by taxes, which it never has been here, then they make it up with state aid. But that presents some of the challenges we'll discuss here later in the local option budget too. Teresa, next slide. Now, this next slide also has the budget, pardon me, the inflation gap, which you see the green here has grown over the years. Couple of years, the blue being state aid, then you can see state aid has generally increased, came down a couple of years here because the state of Kansas passed through some economic recovery money that it received in lieu of state aid, so that made up the difference. You can see here along the bottom, taxes, 20 mils has remained relatively steady here in the district. And in 2015, you'll see there are no taxes, that's because the state changes things from time to time. And what's going to happen is the taxes collected here in Fannie County for USC 457, that is, will be dispersed, collected and dispersed by the state. So it will all be called state aid in 2015 or forward until they change things again. We're going to take a look now at this chart which shows us the, the budget per pupil, which is the blue triangle. And this is across all funds. And what I want you to notice here is how steady this has been with the exception of a year where the expenditures included the capital projects fund. Of course, that's, that's pretty much off the chart. But the point is, we've had steady expenditures across all funds for the budget per pupil. But you noticed on the prior chart that the costs were going up budget for the students. So the challenges are how do you find yourself? Well, the total mill levy had gone down until we had the bond election for the capital projects and then it went back up and it's been fairly steady there. But this difference, again, as I mentioned, we were discussing the last slide, is made up by the, well, we've got the inflation challenge, but it's made up by the local option budget to a large extent. Okay? And Teresa, please feel free to jump in if you think it's something that I need to point out. This pie chart represents expenditures across all funds. And in the various categories, because the question always comes up, how much to spend on instruction? Well, there is the pie here, piece of the pie represented by the fund or the expenditures categorized strictly as in instruction. But to that, we also have instructional support staff, to a large extent, other supplemental services, there is quite a bit of IT in this category. Certainly in healthcare, that's the health insurance and retirement payments. Another 50% here is largely based on instructional staff. And student support services as well. The point being, it depends on how you define instruction. And if I were to go around and include the student support services, healthcare capers, the other supplemental services, which I mentioned included quite a bit of IT in that, as well as some employee benefits. And instructional support, which is mostly librarians. School administration includes principals. I think to a large extent, many of the principals also are involved, certainly in instruction. So if you go around and add those categories together, you're going to exceed 70%. So it really truly depends on how you define instruction.
Here, could you tell us what is included under debt service?
Debt service is principal and interest.
Oh, okay.
For the facilities, the bond issue. And I'll touch on that briefly a little bit later for you also. Now, we're looking at a bar chart, just a couple of things to point out with this. Areas of growth tend to be in the healthcare and capers. This is the instruction and over the years, we're beginning with 2009 and showing through 2014 actual. You'll notice here, operations and maintenance did have a spike with the new facilities going online, they jumped a bit there. Maybe the other categories are fairly constant, as you can see. Food service will vary some, of course. Debt service increased as we had the new facilities going online. And of course, facilities acquisition is off the charts in 2010.
So transfers between funds are?
Eliminated. Yeah, they're not, they're not included in this. What we're attempting to do is get exactly a true picture of those categories across all of us, so we did eliminate transfers. Now, we're looking at all funds revenue and the, whoops, that was me, I'm sure, Teresa, sorry. I'm juggling a pointer. I'm left-handed and I'm...